Before we move on to the next item of the public recognition, I do want to announce that the board held an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. We can now move on to a public recognition, that would be Mr. David Lieberman, who is a middle school principal. He will introduce our special guest this evening, Mr. Lieberman, it's all yours.
Hello. This evening, it is my honor and privilege to introduce Mr. Joe Welsh, the 2018 National History Teacher of the Year. Joe, could you come join me, please? Mr. Welsh works tirelessly to inspire his students every day, and lucky for us, he shows the same dedication and enthusiasm for playing a central role in moving North Hills Middle School forward for the future. He guides National History Day entrance through the competition, collaborates with teachers of all subject areas on creative projects like oral history iBooks, engages students in technology-driven classroom lessons like a Constitution Day escape room or stop-motion Lego videos, and welcomes the community for special events alongside prestigious organizations like PBS. We are fortunate to have Mr. Joe Welsh as part of our school and the North Hills community. Congratulations, Joe.
First off, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. The school board, thank you for having me here tonight. I know the Steeler game is coming on soon, so I won't go as fast as Antonio Brown on McKnight Road was today. But, first off, I would like to thank all of the students that I've taught over the past 12 years. I think the best part of this award has been students popping back in my classroom and just saying a quick hello and a quick congratulations. Seeing their faces again has been outstanding. Also, I would like to thank my colleagues at the middle school. Again, they've been outstanding, the words that they've shared with me throughout this entire process. And I would also be remiss if I didn't thank the two middle school teachers that nominated me, Vicky Trushen and Larry Dorencamp. Also, Gilder Lerman, the institute of American history that organizes this entire process, has been absolutely wonderful, not just to me, but we actually had two North Hills students and their parents, all expenses paid, they were up in New York City with me for three days in midtown Manhattan. So, that organization, they did wonderful things for those students. We actually had the opportunity to visit their Gilder Lerman collection, where we got to literally take the gloves off and touch some documents that are literally from the 1400s. So, it was a really great experience for those students, and they did a fantastic job at the award ceremony as well. Also, I know I mentioned Vicky Trushen earlier, who was one of the teachers that nominated me. She actually joined me up in New York, all expenses, she covered all of her own expenses and came up, so I thank her very much for being there, supporting me from North Hills School District. And one last thing, this organization, just sharing what they do for all North Hills students. Because both the middle school and high school are affiliate schools, we have access to 70,000 of their artifacts and documents at no charge. We actually have had five teachers take advantage of summer teaching seminars, all expenses paid by Gilder Lerman, all around the country. We have now, on January 25th, we will have several teachers attending the Hamilton Education Program at the Benidam. And then, I would also like to invite you, I just found this out last week, Gilder Lerman will be sending a scholar based on one of two topics that hasn't been finalized yet, but the week of February 19th, to meet not only with a group of eighth grade students, but also our AP US History students. So, that'll be coming up in February, and I thank you for all of your support.
Thank you, Joe. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. You deserve it. Appreciate all your hard work.
Okay, I just have to say, I'm sure the board will share my feelings on this, but Joe's just a super teacher, and he's just indicative of the kind of teachers that we have in this district. They work hard, they put a lot of time and effort into their jobs, and I think that the results are showing that, and Joe is one of just many that we like to consider as National Teachers of the Year. But, congratulations again, Joe, great job, great job. You still do a great job at the football games, too. Good job. Okay, and we'll move on to board member comments, and before I entertain any other, I just want to mention two things. We all know of the tragedy that struck our city last few weeks back, and I just want to mention, it kind of struck home for the district, as you all know, Dr. Godfrey, who worked here as a dentist in the school district, and Dr. Peg Dorotzko, his wife, takes care of a lot of our students. And so, our hearts and prayers and thoughts go out to that family, and I understand that Peg was back in work like Monday or Tuesday, Monday afterwards. If any of you know her, she is one strong woman, but our hearts, as I said, just pour out to the family. We don't need to rehash that, we all kind of felt that. And just from my perspective, that hit home for me, the first respondent officer that responded to the shooting was a long, has been a longtime friend of mine, I've known him since he was a toddler, Officer Tim Mattson, and he was shot eight times. And he's kind of, he's a slow recovery, he's been through seven surgeries so far since the day of the shooting, and I think there's a few more to come, so there's a long road for his healing. But, I know you're all thinking of all the people and the families that were affected by that, but I just wanted to pass on that, obviously, Dr. Godfrey, who was a resident of the district, was part of that shooting, so. Any other board member comments that we might have? Ellie?
Sure, it's a little hard to follow up on that, but I just wanted to mention that our Safe Schools Alert tip reporting service is finally rolling out on Monday. We had some technical delays, but this is going to be a confidential reporting service available to parents and students to report bullying or safety issues, and some information will be coming out from the district, I believe, on Monday regarding how to use that service.
The Fall Play is happening next weekend, it's the Beverly Hillbillies. I believe there's performances Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I'm excited to go, and I'm taking my family, and I encourage everybody else to check it out, too. I think it's probably going to be pretty funny.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just in addition to the Fall Play, on Thursday evening up here, the athletic office will be having their open house for Christmas shopping.
Oh, that's right.
And it's a nice place to attend, everything's on display, you can buy it, put it on layaway, or order it. So, I encourage you that if you're coming to the Fall Play, stop, go a little bit early and stop for the sale, the red sale.
Yes, red sale, that's right. Thank you, Kathy. Lou?
I'd like to remind everyone that November 11th is Veterans Day, and don't forget to thank the veterans for their service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, Lou.
Tom also.
Thank you for your service.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the public comments on the agenda items only. I think we have a few people that signed up to speak. So, if whoever would like to, I don't have the list of who signed up, but whoever would like to get up first, Matt, would you? Dee, would you like to read our, or would you want me to do it?
I can do it.
Okay, please do.
We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. The board does reserve the right to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speakers or issues. Some of your concerns can be quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussions. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest.
Those of you that speak, if you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, and then you can carry on.
Good evening. My name is Matt Demharder. I'm the president of the North Hills Education Association. I don't really think you need my address, I live way far away, but I'm here to speak to you tonight on behalf of our association in regards to a potential of moving the kindergarten start date back. I don't know where that fits in the agenda later on, but about three years ago, we had a group of staff members approach the executive board with some concerns about the start date or the age of some of our incoming kindergarteners being a little bit, maybe on the potentially, on the younger side, and what that kind of means, and how that plays out for that group of youngsters, where there being a little bit, some of them are maybe just turning five and getting kind of right into kindergarten without any type of, some of them had no prior schooling or nursery school or daycare experiences, and some of the challenges they faced with kindergarten curriculum. And there is such a thing as kindergarten curriculum. I know when I went to kindergarten, it was more like just play with some trucks and do some coloring and have a snack and stuff, but it's a lot different now. That being said, we approached Dr. Manarino a couple months ago with some of our ideas and concerns, and I think it kind of speaks to our relationship, our working relationship with him and his administration and with the school board, and they were all open and all ears. And I just wanted to comment on that, we have our elementary rep at large, Ms. Sherry Kovach, is going to speak to you guys tonight. She conducted a survey of our kindergarten staff and put some data together to kind of support the thought of the idea of maybe a readiness profile, and to try to help the students, basically, with some of the struggles they've been having. So, without being too long, I'm going to turn it over to Sherry at this point, she can speak a little more specifically to that. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Kovach, I'm a second grade teacher at High Cliff Elementary, and I'm also, as Matt said, the elementary rep at large for the North Hills Education Association. Like Matt had said, over the last several years, we had several of our teachers in both the primary, intermediate, and even at the secondary level, just talking about some concerns they had with the students over the last several years, and their ability to manage and cope with the expectations of the curriculum. Most specifically, it started with the kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers and second grade teachers, saying that, noticing that many of the students were really beginning to struggle, there were issues with anxiety, students being able, not being able to handle the rigor socially and emotionally and behaviorally, manage those types of things, because we do have a rigorous and a wonderful curriculum here, but for some of the kiddos, it's just a little bit too much. So, I, with the support of the NHEA, we came up with a survey specifically targeting the kindergarten teachers and asking them about what they're seeing in their students and what they've seen in their students over the last several years. There were about 10 questions, some were open-ended, some were questions where they had to answer yes or no, some were questions where they had to do rankings, basically just asking them to discuss the various criteria as to what would be beneficial to incoming kindergarten students in the future if we were to be able to make some changes to benefit those kiddos. About 76% of the teachers in our kindergarten program believe that the summer birthdays, those kiddos come in less prepared academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. 84% of those same teachers noticed that those kiddos tend to struggle with the expectations of the program, and there were various other questions, and there was a resounding agreement that, you know, these kids are really struggling, and it's our job to figure out what we can do to help them. So, the teachers and the North Hills Education Association came up with a list of recommendations, anywhere from changing the birthday cutoff date to kindergarten readiness testing, which the administration seems very in favor of, just to see when those kiddos come in, exactly where they are, so that we can better help them sooner rather than later, supplying parents with preparatory activity packets, and even possibly doing some evening activities with those kiddos before they actually come into the school, before they start kindergarten, and just to try to see where they are and see how we can best help them. And again, to piggyback on what Matt said, Dr. Manarino and the board have been very open to listening to our concerns, and it really speaks to the relationship that has been developed between our association and all of those people sitting up there, that they really do have the kids' best interests at heart. And I can speak firsthand as a former kindergarten first grade and current second grade teacher, I've seen how the curriculum has changed, I've seen how the kiddos have changed, I've seen how the curriculum has changed the way they deal with things, and we really do appreciate all of their support, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. I do have to say, too, just to pick what Sherry had mentioned, we do spend a fair amount, considerable amount of time with our teachers, asking their input, and we have a great working relationship with them, as does the administration. And this has been something we've sort of been thinking about and talking about for quite some time, and the impact that in some cases, if children start kindergarten too early, does that pose us some problems emotionally, not so much mentally, but emotionally? And we appear to be seeing some of those things, and in some cases, we're also seeing them where these problems are arising later on, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, where, you know, kids start, things change when they're in the middle schools, we all know. And so, as a result, we're seeing some children, maybe a little bit too young, struggling with emotional issues with just, with friends and things of that nature. So, we asked our teachers to take a good, hard look at this and ask them to make the recommendations, because they're the ones that are seeing this on a daily basis. And so, I want to thank you all again for doing that, it was very helpful, and we are certainly looking at the possibility of moving that date back a little bit, simply because we think it's in the best interest, or at least from our professionals, which I happen to agree with, it might be in the best interest to take a second look at that and where these children, when they start, and maybe in the long run, it could help them going through 12 grades, not just kindergarten, first or second grade.
Ed, I wanted to clarify also, this is part of the policy discussion that we're going to have, and it's sort of separate from the enrollment issues that we're discussing separately.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that.
So, I know there are some issues related to kindergarten on that, and this would be separate from that.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with enrollment, so to speak. Thank you, I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Thank you, folks, I appreciate it. Yes, if you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Colleen Roth, and my address is 117 Brookmead Drive, Pittsburgh, PA 15237. I'm a resident in the district, and I have two children in the elementary at High Cliff. I have a third grader and a fifth grader. And I just wanted to speak this evening just to address the discussion that'll be taking place at the end of the meeting regarding the good problem that we have of enrollment in the elementary schools. And I just wanted to speak in reply to Dr. Manarino's letter that was sent on the 22nd via email, that these suggestions that are being made, specifically looking at the district grade configuration of moving sixth grade to the middle school, that it is highly unlikely these options will be necessary this coming school year. I just wanted to voice, as a parent of a fifth grader, and I know I've spoken to many other fifth grade parents, that we're concerned that it's even slightly likely that this could happen next year. We don't feel that we would like our children to be put or rushed through a program that hasn't been thoroughly planned out or given time to be addressed. So, I personally am not opposed to that as an option, I don't think that's a bad idea. I do think, as the parent of a fifth grader, I just don't want my child put in a program that maybe wasn't given the time to develop properly and put my child in that situation where they don't have a good experience coming up to the middle school. And then, I'd also just like to ask Dr. Manarino, when you give your presentation at the end, if you're going to be addressing, as this large number of elementary students move up through the program, are plans being thought through for what happens when they come into the high school, since the language arts are now being moved over to the high school? I'm just curious personally, again, you know, how that, how everybody's going to fit when these large sixth grade classes and kindergarten classes are coming up to the high school? So, that's all, I just wanted to address my concerns.
Thank you, Colleen. That'll all be in the presentation, everything you said, and I just, before I even get to this, I agree with you about moving fifth graders, and that's where the highly unlikely words are, yeah, you'll see when we get to the numbers that this is not a knee-jerk reaction, oh my, what are we going to do next year, like it was whenever we got our demographic data late in the last time we had to talk about this, and we were forced to make a decision that year. We're not in that situation right now. And I'll show you that whenever I get to my presentation with the details of what those numbers look like as we move up through. And then, the second part, I will explain about both buildings, the high school and the middle school, that were built for much, much larger populations, and I can explain how even the largest population that we have right now, which is kindergarten, fits easily into this building and the high school, whenever they are over there, based upon the capacities that both of them were built and then rebuilt as when they were renovated. So, the capacity issue does not exist on this hilltop, even for our largest elementary classes right now. We can go much larger than what our largest class is, and I'm going to explain all of that. But, I wanted everybody to know, as a parent of children, I would not want this to happen to my fifth grade child for next year either, and I do take a lot of my decisions into consideration as the parent hat that I get to wear for the three kids that I have. So, I want everybody to know that this is not, oh no, what are we going to do, look what I just discovered. That's not where we are tonight. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Oh, okay. Well, thank you, thanks again. We can now, we don't have a solicitor's report, I guess, for anything, public meeting? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, my bad. We can move over to the approval of the minutes, and I'm going to just make a motion that the board approve the minutes from the October 4th, 2018 work session slash legislative meeting per the attached.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I guess we don't have any student reps tonight, they must be at the Steeler game, right?
All I've had to work.
Oh, yeah, right. We'll see them on TV tonight. Right, okay, yeah, sure, sure. We're buying that one. All right. Okay, all right. And next, we have our superintendent's report, the Points of Pride, so Dr. Manarino, it's all yours.
We had a very busy October with a lot of great things happening in our school district, and those of you that are new to our board meetings, this is my superintendent's report, which is the pride, tradition, and excellence of the district for the month of October. The first thing that we had is our grade eight students made a choice to stand against hate in their English classes following the Tree of Life tragedy, a part of their ongoing lessons on the Diary of Anne Frank and human rights, and within the school's designation of No Place for Hate School by the Anti-Defamation League. Students defined and described hate, and each student then came up with a way I can overcome hate by, and hung their signs in eighth grade hallways to inspire and encourage their fellow students. And you can see, Vicky's here tonight, that's a photograph of one of our eighth grade teachers. So, Vicky, thank you for doing that and the wonderful job that you're doing with our eighth grade students, so thank you. High Cliff Elementary students, High Cliff Elementary sixth grader Kylie Johnson completed the, in the World Robot Summit in Tokyo. She and her two teammates participated in the junior division of the World Robot Challenge and programmed their robot Pepper to perform tasks that would be helpful and useful in schools. Our pumpkin carving traditions continued as students in various North Hills Elementary Schools continued a North Hills tradition of carving pumpkins with their family members. We are proud to have four of our seniors who were named 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program Committed Students, and they are among only 34,000 commended students throughout the United States who are recognized for their academic accomplishments. Ross Elementary first graders learned all about pumpkins during their hands-on experimentation activities, and students measured the circumference of their pumpkins, calculated the height of their pumpkins, and tested the buoyancy of multiple pumpkins, for all of the Halloween fun stuff. We already mentioned the Beverly Hillbillies will be performed by our high school on the 15th, 16th, and 17th at 7:30 PM in the high school auditorium. All tickets are $5, and they are available at the door, so we hope to see you there. The North Hills Singers were featured guests at Indiana University of Pennsylvania during the university's Choral Collage Concert. The North Hills Marching Band held their annual stadium review show, bringing their field show indoors, and they collected 12 large bags of toys and books for the Labor of Love Toy Drive to benefit those in needs this holiday season. Senior cross-country runner Joey Buhner qualified for the PIAA Cross Country Championships following a winning performance at the WPIL Championships. Our varsity football team advanced to the WPIL 5A Playoffs where they faced Penn Trafford last Friday, and at that game, the helmets were adorned with a Stronger Than Hate sticker in remembrance of the Tree of Life synagogue tragedy. The North Hills School District commemorated America's Safe Schools Week with featured stories on each of our new police officers. The bios of each officer can be found in the new school police website under Parents on the School Safety on the district website. Our So Fabulous Club members visited UPMC Hillman Cancer Center to deliver port pillows that they made for chemotherapy patients who are undergoing treatment. Ross Elementary students traced their feet and made footprints stating ways I can stop bullying by, led by Ross Guidance Counselors Dom McElhaney and Lauren Barber, and they used nearly 700 footprints to create a visual reminder of the many ways that we can stand against bullying. The North Hills and Penn Hills united on game night to raise more than $950 for the American Heart Association. Ross Elementary students partnered with Tree Pittsburgh, One Tree Per Child, the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, and Ross Township Parks and Recreation to plant 20 persimian and pawpaw trees at Sangree Park. As a part of Unity Day, middle school students came together against bullying by sitting with someone new at lunch, brainstorming ways to stop bullying, and creating a rock garden from kindness rocks. The high school National Honor Society sponsored a blood drive, and students and staff donated 38 units of blood that will be used to help 114 local patients. McIntyre Elementary staff members raised $3,780 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and participated in the organization's Light the Night Walk. Congratulations to the 2018 Homecoming Queen Jessica Kapler, and her court also included runner-up Juliette California and second runner-up Julia Fedorochak. And those were our Points of Pride, Tradition, and Excellence for the month of October. At this time, I'd like to welcome our AW Beatty Principal to the stand. AW Beatty is our career technical program, and we're doing a lot of amazing and wonderful things at AW Beatty, and I thought it'd be nice for Mr. Watkins, who's the principal at AW Beatty, to come out and share some of the things that we're doing at Beatty, and he has a presentation tonight that he presented to our principals. And Mr. Nudy, who is one of our Beatty representatives on the school board, was there and was so impressed by it, he asked if we could get Mr. Watkins to come out to a school board meeting some night and give this presentation. So, I'm sorry that we have a presentation about enrollment that filled the room for you, but it's really nice, because you're doing some great things there, and we're really proud to have you here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to present on behalf of Beatty this evening. As was stated, we do have a lot of things going on, and I'd like to offer some insight as the local economy has changed, the global economy has changed, and career and technical education has changed. So, it's not often what people imagine or think of, so I'll try to be brief. I'm proud of a lot of things our students and teachers are doing, so there's a lot to talk about. Okay, so, the first thing I like to do is highlight our teachers, because often with career and technical education, we have teachers that are out in industry that come into the classroom and they teach the content in which they worked in professionally. So, not a lot of the time do people understand the background that some of our teachers have. So, I'd like to highlight Mr. Michael Perucker, he's our advanced manufacturing teacher and robotics instructor. Mr. Perucker is a very humble individual, and I met with him prior to creating this presentation to see if it was all right, if I could highlight his profile. Mr. Perucker, his education, he has undergraduate degree from MIT, focusing in electrical science and engineering. He has a master's degree in bioengineering from University of Pittsburgh, and he has relevant work experience with 20 years as an industrial automation engineer. So, what he brings to the classroom when I observe his class is, he brings the content and the curriculum, but he also brings 20 years of industry experience. So, not only is he delivering the information to the students, but he's also explaining how to deliver messages and information to key stakeholders and companies. I have seen him describe the students' boardroom activity and the key individuals that you need to engage in conversation to present basically multimillion-dollar deals to big corporations. And also, he brings it all the way back to the line, essentially highlighting technical individuals that give him, at his point in time in his career, insight into how the robotics function and things of that nature. So, he really built upon the relationships within organizations. So, I feel that that's key in what we're teaching at AW Beatty Career Centers, we're really tying that content to the actual work experience for true career-connected learning. Much like all the schools around, Beatty is no different. We are looking for ways to connect with students socially, emotionally, and cognitively. Some of the ways in which we do that is, we have a new program this year that we rolled out, it's called Beatty 360 Outdoors. I have to give teachers credit for that, because that's a teacher-led program, and what that does is it ties the content in the classroom, the programs to outdoor activity, which I'll explain a little bit- need to engage in conversation to present basically multimillion-dollar deals to big corporations. And also, he brings it all the way back to the line, essentially highlighting technical individuals that give him, at his point in time in his career, insight into how the robotics function and things of that nature. So, he really built upon the relationships within organizations. So, I feel that that's key in what we're teaching at AW Beatty Career Centers. We're really tying that content to the actual work experience for true career-connected learning. Much like all the schools around, Beatty is no different. We are looking for ways to connect with students socially, emotionally, and cognitively. Some of the ways in which we do that is we have a new program this year that we rolled out. It's called Beatty 360 Outdoors. I have to give teachers credit for that because that's a teacher-led program. And what that does is it ties the content in the classroom, the programs to outdoor activity, which I'll explain a little bit here in greater detail. We have a Beatty Assistance Team, which in most schools is known as a SAP program, Student Assistance Program. We tagged it as a Beatty Assistant Team, as a BAT team, so we have teachers that wear the BAT logo. And again, it's another way we're integrating social and emotional learning into the school. We have these individuals, and we have the teachers wear the shirts occasionally so they know who they can reach out to. Over the last three years since I've been at Beatty, I've introduced the Breakfast and Lunch with the Principal program. Again, it's a way to outreach to students. We stand outside every day. We see the students get off the bus. We kind of know, you know, the high achieving students, maybe the students that are in the office for maybe not so pleasant things, but the ones in the middle that are doing the right thing. They may have a job after work. They're playing sports. You see them carrying two bookbags to Beatty. They're really, you know, stepping out there and putting themselves out there. So, we try to recognize the students in the middle as well. In doing that, we have a program set up. I send out a formal invitation. We try to make it a big deal for students that are recognized that often aren't recognized. Again, Beatty 360 Outdoors, we try to connect the students with the outdoors and local resources. That's one of our key factors there is to connect it to what's in the community. So, here's a list of some of the events that we have going this year. Bulldog Boot Camp, which we had. We do a trout fishing trip at North Park. Hike at North Park, they've done that. I won't read through them all, but just know that we really engage with the community and see what's out there for the students. Again, tapping into that social, emotional, cognitive, and physical learning for students to try and connect on all those levels. The Breakfast and Lunch program with the principal, again, just to give you some greater detail into that, teachers nominate two students from their AM and PM program, emphasis on students in the middle who should be recognized that aren't always recognized. So, it gives them the opportunity to be recognized. We have a culinary program with a restaurant. The meal is fabulous. The students cook it, so we celebrate the students in the culinary program again. So, it's an opportunity for students to recognize their classmates as well. Resources have presented them prior to their meal. I have the counselor, a co-op facilitator, student ethics coordinator. They all join us for lunch. Again, it's an opportunity for us to engage and connect that career-connected learning to see what we can do better to put them on the pathway of where they want to be, whether it's post-secondary education, or job shadowing, or whatever the case may be. It's just another opportunity for us to meet face-to-face with the students and put them on the path that they wish to travel. Feedback is requested again so that we can just continue to provide for the students. In a lot of our districts, what we've been doing over the last several years for gaining, I guess, attention at Beatty and also working in partnerships with our nine sending districts is we have a comprehensive plan with our STEAM program to outreach to our elementary schools, fourth grade, fifth grade, and eighth grade. Last year, we did 25 events in 21, or I'm sorry, 25 events in total, 21 in our district, four in the community, and we had contact with 8,500 students in our nine sending districts as well as in the community. And again, this is targeting STEAM activity, what our programs are about, and just career-connected learning at the elementary level, middle school level, to foster that thought process. Again, as our local economy and global economy is changing, we try to be in line with that and provide those resources to our elementary schools as well as the community. NOCTI, I'll be brief on that. I don't want to hit you with too much data. I'll just say that we have our Performance NOCTIs in April. We've already had the pre-NOCTIs. Our three-year trend is traveling upward. Students are doing very, very well. NOCTIs are the tests in which the students take. There's a hands-on and there's a written portion. The hands-on portion, we have outside industry professionals that come in and they evaluate the students on what they can do competency-wise for hands-on skills. And then, like I said, we're trending upwards, and overall, we're at 88.2 overall for where we're at. I won't hit you with too much data on that, other than the scores are good, and we hope to continue to increase those. With all of our programs, do know that the students have opportunity to earn college credits as they're in the program. We have articulation agreements with many technical schools, colleges, and universities. I believe this one is for our cybersecurity program. We have the potential for students to earn up to 12 college credits from Robert Morris University. That's one of our bigger ones with that. That saves the students a lot of money, and again, they're kind of double-dipping there. They're in high school, they're in the program, they can earn those college credits. We link them up with our counselors as well as the sending school counselors to make sure the proper paperwork is filled out and that they can earn those credits and be awarded those. We have an articulation agreement with robotics program as well through Cal-U, and those students can earn credits, up to 12 credits, I believe, as well. And what can happen is they basically would be rolling into their sophomore year after coming back from Christmas vacation in their freshman year. So, it really advances them, puts them on the fast track, and saves them some money. So, I spoke rather quickly. I know there's a football game tonight, but I just want to say I really appreciate the relationship that North Hills has with AW Beatty Career Center. Collaboratively, we're doing a lot of great things with the students, and again, we're trying everything that we can to outreach to them socially, emotionally, cognitively, engage them, provide those needs at the Career Center as well as that career-connected learning. So, I truly appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Thank you. Okay, we're now going to move on to education. That'll be Mrs. Mathis.
Thank you. We have another presentation from Dr. Taylor, who's going to give an overview of the results of the Pennsylvania School Climate Survey.
Thank you. Third presentation in a row, so I will try and go through this quickly for you. The Pennsylvania School Climate Survey is something that's created by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and it is given to school districts to give, you can give it either every year or every other year, and this was the year that we started giving the survey. School climate is defined by the Department of Education from Columbia University, is referring to the quality and character life, and based on patterns of students, parents, and school personnel's experience of school life. So, when you look at that, you're looking at things like engagement and a welcoming environment, and how we involve our families in our school district. School climate is extremely important. When you look at that, it impacts academic achievement, the mental and behavioral health, and overall school success. This survey helps to give the district some data to look at how we can improve things and what we're doing well in areas that we can improve. It's measured by four domains, the social, emotional learning, student support, academic rigor, and safe and respectful school climate. So, each of those four domains, there's multiple questions for each one, and we did administer the survey to parents, faculty and staff, and students in fifth, seventh, and ninth grade to represent all three levels in our school district. So, first, I just want to give you a summary of the parents and guardians responses. It's out of four points, the summary. Now, some of the questions in each category, for example, under student support, it might ask a question that, you know, "My child likes his or her teachers." It might, under expectations, it might say, "Adults that have, adults at the school have high expectations for my child." It might say, "I feel like I'm actively involved in my child's education." And safe schools, obviously, is pretty self-explanatory. Do you feel safe in your schools, in your classrooms, in your hallways? Do you feel welcomed in your school? Is your school a supportive and inviting place for students? So, our parents, overall, you can see the average is above the state average. Obviously, that is something we're continuing to work on. You saw recently a lot of slides in Dr. Manorino's presentation about anti-bullying. We have a lot of great campaigns going on for anti-bullying, No Place for Hate. We're doing a lot of really great programs to reduce school violent issues, since the Standing Hook Promise. We've revised our guidance curriculum to do a lot more social and emotional learning in our schools. So, we're going to be using all those different avenues to try and work on increasing those scores. Some areas of interest, I thought I would pull out a few questions. My child's getting a good education at this school. So, 95% of our parents said yes. That was very nice. My child likes his or her teachers, 94% yes. We have the absolute best teachers, so we are very fortunate in our district to have phenomenal teachers. That is absolutely no surprise to me whatsoever that our parents feel that way. Our faculty and staff, again, those kinds of questions I just mentioned before, similar questions, but just from the faculty and staff's perspective. So, 3.10 over 2.94, so we're above the state average, and all of our principals were given the detailed data. There's a binder about this stick in my office right now, and I gave all the school principals this information that they can dig down deep into that data and work with their faculty, staff, and counselors to try and focus on those areas. Some areas of faculty and staff, I kind of teased those out. This school provides a safe environment for teaching and learning our teachers. 94% said yes. Provides positive experiences for students. 97% of our faculty and staff said yes. Again, very good statistics. Our elementary students, you can see where our elementary student scores are. And in fifth grade, we asked questions on the survey such as things like, "I'm bored in school." Are you bored in school? Are you engaged in school? That's under expectations. My teacher asked me to explain my answers. The homework I get from my teachers helps me learn. Those are the kinds of questions we ask our students. Some highlighted areas from that data, the school police officer helps to make our school a safer place. I pulled that out specifically because I know the board has had many discussions about school police officers over the last year or so, and so I felt very comforted that 100% of the students that we surveyed said, "Yes, that school police officer is making my school a safer place." Again, no surprise that our students would say, "Teachers and staff in this school are willing to give students help." No surprise there. Again, we have just fantastic teachers. Our middle school students, you can see their survey results there, 2.92 over 2.68. Similar questions that we asked of the elementary school students, just a little bit different level there. Again, asked about the school police officer, 99% yes. How safe do you feel in your classes? 98% either very safe or mostly safe. Again, very good statistics. Our high school student scores are up there. We didn't have as many high school students respond to the survey as I would have hoped. So, I think that as we move forward, we're going to try and work on getting more students involved in the survey, as well as, I know I've discussed this with our high school principals, and they're going to be working with our faculty and staff in order to address all four domains. We're doing phenomenal things at our high school, and I think we just need to continue doing those things and build upon them, and you're going to see in the future that we'll have higher scores in that area. Again, asked about the school police officer, 92% yes. How safe do you feel? 95% feel very safe or mostly safe. So, again, very good statistics there. So, again, all that data that we have on our school climate, we are looking to improve our school climate, because you, all school districts should be doing that. Every year, they should be trying to work on improving school climate. So, we're looking at positive discipline. We're looking at cultural competence. We provided our professional development days, had some cultural competence PD there. School connectedness, homeschool collaboration, all those pieces of the puzzle. We are providing either professional development or programs and services to our students and our parents to continue to improve school climate in our district. Are there any questions? Mrs. Mathis?
Have you been in touch with the high school administration regarding the high school results and to try to put a plan in place to address those numbers that were below average and improve them?
I have, yes. Mrs. Williams is on all that.
An audience question.
I don't know if I, am I allowed to answer audience questions?
But, those questions, then, when you ask the elementary students, is it broken down into, like, Ross, where you have to?
Yes.
And where those reports came from, if it was lower, like, at Ross, and what's the rest, if they're still online?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
They're all online surveys, correct? So, we are given a, um, you know, that?
Yes.
And number-wise, you know, I just, um, number-wise in the high school, like, how many kids participate? You know, like, percentage of the, uh?
The high school student population was a few, maybe 200, 300. It wasn't a very high number, but we only did survey the one grade level, though. I think it was 100 and some students in that grade level.
Do you just, for the why it's not mandatory, like, the school climate, sort of, for the high school kids, like you're asking? Like, is it something that could be in, sort of?
Certainly, our school board could make it mandatory, but it's not a Department of Education requirement that we do this.
Thanks for that one. All right. They can't leave school until they fill it out, right? No diploma for you, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Thank you.
There are two more items this evening. Under education, they're both grants to accept. The first is a grant award from the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Office for Safe Schools in the amount of $20,012, which is going to be targeted for the purchase of a radio communication system for the North Hills School District Police Officers and administrative staff. And the second is a grant award from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in the amount of $25,000. I just wanted to explain this one a little bit more. The School Safety and Security Committee within the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency was created by Governor Wolf in June of 2018, and grants of up to $25,000 are given to school districts who apply for school security reasons. We're going to be using our grant to upgrade some cameras and add some more cameras in the high school and upgrade our school security plan from a paper version to a digital version. So, the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve education items two and three.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ali. Next will be the athletics and activities. Ms. Gazera?
I have two items. A field trip request. The softball team has requested a field trip to Ripken Experience in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee from Wednesday, March 20th through Sunday, March 24th. That will involve some training and allow them to prepare for the season and gain valuable training time. And another item, the approval of a donation from North Hills Aquatics of five lane ropes that the North Hills Aquatics team would put in the high school pool. So...
Go ahead. You can make a motion if you want.
Yep. The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve athletics and activities, item one and two.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Wilgus. I will be voting no on the field trip based on what was submitted. The students will miss three days of classes, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, to go down to Tennessee and play three games, one scrimmage. I think that's a lot of time off for a student to miss school for athletic purposes. So, I'll be voting no on item one.
Have you ever been to Pigeon Forge?
No.
You're missing out. All right. Maybe I'll go play.
They want to win.
You should make the pick, exactly. Okay, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Burnett. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. We can now, Mr. Nudi, do you have anything for the Beatty career? We had a nice report this evening, but if there's anything else you want to add?
Well, the last Monday, they had the Advisory Council Breakfast and Meetings. The Advisory Council is a group of business and educational organizations to get together and start mapping out curriculum and career fields four or five years down the road to meet the future markets in the United States. I think it's a very, very good program. One thing I'd like to point out about Beatty, when I came on the board 10 years ago, yeah, a 10-year pin, Beatty, I think at that point was looked at as an alternative educational program rather than a career readiness, and I think they've done a tremendous job in developing curriculum that is meaningful, preparing the students for jobs in the future. So, and I have a very good feeling that Beatty is going to continue to improve in that particular area. Now, the other item I have with Beatty is, we have two students that were students of the month for September and October. It was Nicholas Earlbutt in HVAC, and, let's see, you know, emergency response technician was Kasia Bauer from North Hills. was Kasia Bauer from North Hills.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nudi. Thank you for that report.
Mr. Nudi, isn't there some important dates coming up at Beatty in December?
There's a craft show, and then there's a, you'll be getting an invitation for the Christmas party in December.
Okay, thank you.
There's a craft show and Christmas shopping at this Saturday at Beatty.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we can now move on to personnel, and that would be Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Wilgus. Personnel items such as resignations, appointments, change of status, and leaves of absence are discussed in executive session, and therefore, as the superintendent recommends, and I so move that we approve personnel items one through four.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Reed, it looks like we don't have anything under community intergovernmental relations unless you have anything to add.
No, we don't.
Thank you. And also, with regards to legislative items, Mr. Nudi, we don't have anything unless you have something you'd like to add.
No, there isn't. The next seating of the legislature will start all over again, and we'll be pushing our educational platform through for the next two years and hopefully get some things, uh, changed in the area of, uh, school funding and also relief from cyber school funding.
Great, thank you. Well, you still have the floor for policy.
Okay, there are four items in the policy agenda. The first one is, uh, policy zero zero six, deals with, um, meeting revisions. And the only change in that policy is, come on, well, anyway, it didn't come up. It's, we're adding, uh, uh, an item of the, uh, deals with, uh, uh, school safety and security. That's the only change to that particular policy. And then, uh, the second is the admissions of students, and I think that was pretty well-covered. Does anybody have any comments on?
I have one comment. I, I know when we first looked at this, we made, we wanted to make sure that the administration spoke to our kindergarten teachers. And based on the policy now, there's only a change of one month. And to me, I just want to know if that, I mean, what are we really accomplishing in one month? That's, I mean, I thought, I thought three, four months or something like that, but one month, I don't see how that makes that big of a difference. But I rely on the teachers to tell us that.
I was actually a little concerned going into July, just from what other school districts around us do. We would have been the earliest cutoff date of all the schools in Allegheny County. Most of them are based upon the first day of school. Ours is normally the third week of August for the first day of school, so even backing that up three weeks before the first day of school puts us in the earlier, uh, top third of schools in Allegheny County. So, going beyond, earlier than that, I was really uncomfortable saying ours is the earliest. Um, I know that Sherry did a study of the kindergarten teachers and, um, you know, it's, it's hard when you're dealing with a date. There's, there's a lot of things that factor into readiness, so the most important part of this policy, I think, is the kindergarten readiness assessment, something that we don't have. And so, that's the part of the policy that I think is most effective for us, that will help us get the students the right support that they need walking in the door. And that's the part of the policy that I support the most. The date has a minimal impact. I think we have fifteen students that fall into that category for this particular school year. But we, we also maintain the early readiness policy of this, that if you feel that your child is ready, you know, you know them better than we do, they are ready and they meet certain readiness requirements that they could start early. So, it didn't eliminate that opportunity to start early. It just backs up the mandated date by one month.
Can you, can you talk about that a little bit more? The, the proposed change, I think, we would change the, um, the date, the birth date would be, um, August first if you are, you need to be five before August first. But if you turn five between August first and August thirty-first, what is the proposal?
Between August first?
So, your birthday is July thirty-first.
Yeah.
You're in kindergarten, you're fine. You turn five. If you turn five on August first?
Yeah.
The proposal, as I understand it, is that we would, everybody, everybody would take the assessment test. If you turn five in August, you would need to get a certain score on the assessment test, and if you got that score, you would be permitted to enter kindergarten.
Yeah.
If you did not get a certain score, you would not be permitted, but that's only, applies to August birthdays.
Right.
So, so while we're moving the date back, you still have an opportunity. If your kid is ready to go to kindergarten, then, you know, you could, you could proceed with, you know, and allowing them to enter kindergarten. But everybody, everybody that turns five before, regardless of how they do on the test, everybody that turns five before July thirty-first would be.
Correct.
Would be entering kindergarten.
Can I add some concerns I have on to what Sandy said?
Sure.
First of all, I want to say I'm in complete support of the teachers' union and this policy in general, but I am concerned, and I realize it's a small number of people, but for kids that have August birthdays and parents that have been counting on being able to send them to kindergarten next year, I'm just wondering about the timeline of the implementation for this policy or whether we could allow exemptions for the first year because it is a really big financial burden if you've been counting on being able to send your child to kindergarten and now you have to pay for another year of daycare or an alternative childcare. I don't know if we would consider working with those families closely to allow exemptions or possibly rolling this in in the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year to, um, to allow consideration for those families that might have a, a negative financial impact by this policy change.
I mean, I would think certainly the first year, you know, while we're kind of testing out the kinks, it makes sense to say, you know, and, and like you said, there were only fifteen kids for this past kindergarten that had August birthdays at all. So, we're only talking about fifteen kids that may be impacted. So, the ones that don't pass the test, we could then work with the parents and say, you know, just for this year, maybe, you know, recommend that we don't allow them to come to kindergarten, but if they really feel that they need to, for whatever reason, maybe consider a, sort of a grace period for the first year.
So, what, what importance is the date if we're really counting on the assessment test?
It's kind of, I, I kind of see it as a, like, a, a phase in. Do you know what I mean? Like, like, that there's a hard date for everybody that...
But I, I meant changing the date.
Yeah.
So, if we kept the date, what are we saying now, the first day of school?
Yeah. Well, right now, it's September first, so that's, you could, there's one, several children started at age four this year, started kindergarten at age four in our district.
But we could, we could do the same thing, but say, everybody takes the test, so the test would be a measurement, I think, which would.
Right.
Seem to me to be more appropriate than a date.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that, I, I think that makes sense, too. I think that, I, I personally feel that the test is probably the most important thing and, and figuring out, you know, how the children are ready, you know, and where they should go. The, um, the date does seem somewhat arbitrary to me, but, um, you know, because if we push it back, would we then still do our, do the month of September as opposed to the month of August? I don't know if that makes sense, but...
I mean, I don't have a problem with the policy as written, except for, like I said, the consideration of that small group of, of families that would be impacted negatively financially this one year without having enough notice, you know?
Right.
In place to, to make plans for next year and, and budget. So, that's my concern with it.
Do the, does it make sense to ask the teachers if they have any responses to?
Sure.
To any of our concerns?
Sherry?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, what, what was the, what was the thinking with, you know, changing the, to August first as opposed to, you know, just implementing a test and seeing how that goes?
Well, I'm fully in favor of not implementing a task for the simple fact that at least when these kiddos come in, at least we would have some knowledge of what we're dealing with.
Sure.
And/or the possibility of saying, you know, realistically.
Right.
Which suggests, and then if that suggestion wasn't or couldn't be taken, giving them some tools that they could use at home or things that we could, you know, do at home, you know, after school evenings, whatever.
Right.
As far as the date change, I think, coming, being somebody that has formally taught kindergarten and first grade in my last twenty-five years, even in the last twenty-five years, it has changed significantly.
Sure.
Kindergarten is not the kindergarten that we all led to. It's not the kindergarten I taught ten, fifteen years ago.
Right.
It's like first grade. And I think the biggest issue for the teacher, and not even just the kindergarten teachers, but even, um, middle school teachers and high school teachers, which I also have my friends here that are teenagers, they are also seeing, um, they are also seeing some of the same things and are having some of the same concerns about, um, just the emotional, emotionality and the emotional maturity of dealing with just the rigor of the curriculum. It's not just about, do you know your letters, your pillars, your numbers? It's, um, you know, being able to be part of a classroom and a class community and working with one another and handling, you know, when you get to a task that's rigorous and when you get to something that you aren't successful with, how do you manage that and how do you handle that? I mean, it's, as a teacher, it is heartbreaking when a child is a puddle of tears on the floor because they can't get something that, to us, seems so easy and trivial, um, but they just can't work their way around it because they don't have an emotional maturity.
Sure.
So, I think that's, as teachers, where we're coming from, and that's what we're seeing.
I think maybe a month to us doesn't seem like a lot of time.
Right.
But I think what I'm hearing you say is developmentally, emotionally, from the perspective of where children are, a month or six weeks or two months makes a big difference in maybe how a child can handle some of those things.
Right. And I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds as though that little bit of extra time might really make a big difference for some of those kids.
Right. And even when I talked with Dr. Mike Taylor a few weeks ago, we talked about, um, you know, doing the readiness test in the spring, and I said, you know, I would urge you to wait and do the readiness test either right before school starts or within the first week of school. You know, perhaps that kindergarten schedule for that first week might need to look a little different than one through six and, and a kid like him will talk. And maybe you're, you're taking that time because what a kid can do in March, April, or May and what they can do in August is just.
Difference.
The world is different.
Right.
So, are you suggesting perhaps that there's a possibility that you could, a child could pass the readiness test but still not be mature enough to handle?
That's certainly a possibility. I'm not sure what readiness tests we are looking at. And I don't know if there are components that factor in with the social and emotional maturity, maturability. I'm not sure what types of things, or I know what types of things my kiddos did when they were tested and did not, but I don't know if those tests have evolved since then, my children are teenagers now. So, I mean, that certainly is also something that I think that if the kindergarten teachers are testing, um, the kids, even if it's just on academics, they can see how they handle when they, you know, come to a point where they have difficulty or they get to something they can't do and how they manage that. And so, that could also be a, possibly could also be a part of it.
And I wonder if we can get our hands on any research that might suggest that that month actually can make a, that much of a difference?
I mean, I, I've been researching this for years, actually. I, I've researched between a month, three months, a year. I mean, I can, and, but I can find research, you know, for any of those options.
So, a month could make a, a big difference?
Oh, it does.
Okay, good.
And I think with our full-day program, too, which we, I know we're talking about later, but assuming that we continue the full-day program, and as Dr. Manarino was saying, with our early start date, I think those things contribute to wanting to, um, you know, make sure that the kids are as ready as possible. Um, I've also offered up my own child, who will be entering kindergarten next year, as a test subject, so, um, we can test the, you know, have fun. Test her out and see how she does if you want to try a couple tests on. I already told Dr. Taylor that, so...
I mean, I think that's all fine, but I would just, like, urge my fellow board members to think about how we could address the possible families that have a financial need, you know, and have a child who's turning five in August, which, again, I think is probably a small number of families, so maybe we can handle them on an individual basis, but I do think that it, it shouldn't be overlooked.
Maybe that's something we could consider putting into the policy, especially with respect to the first year. I would agree with that as well.
We could, we could draft up some sort of guideline for the implementation of the policy.
Yeah.
So that it's not written into the policy and then, you know, we don't want to write the policy that says for the nineteen, twenty school year, we're going to do this, and for the twenty, twenty-one school year, we're going to do this. So, we could have an implementation plan of this policy that addresses next year.
Okay. Yeah, I like that.
And how we would handle those children that were born in August for next year's kindergarten.
And I mean...
By still moving the start date.
Right. And then I, we had, I, a potential appeal process, you know, if somebody doesn't do well because they had a terrible day, you know, they can come take the test again or something like that. Maybe we can have that.
We'll come up with something and share it with you.
This is the first reading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll share it with you before the next reading, which will be at the next meeting. And if that, if that implementation plan isn't satisfactory, then just, we could table the policy. If it is, we could approve the policy and the plan, and we can move forward with it. Mike, does that sound okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think from that respect, we should do something in, at the next meeting because we've got to let these families know.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm in support of our, of our teachers and what they are suggesting, uh, but, but again, if, if there's a majority of the board that feels differently with respect to next year's students, I certainly understand that, so...
I was just going to make a general comment. I don't think there's anything wrong with, in all of the implementation plans, being clear that there is always an appeal process. Because as I'm listening to the discussion, there were a number of things where families have unusual circumstances, and our, you know, our district, I think, has always provided itself on working with families and trying to help, you know, them in whatever way we can. So, I think, you know, maybe that's just, again, part of, of how we implement it and how we communicate it, that, you know, this is the policy, um, you know, and you go through the steps and you go through the process, and if at the end of the process, a parent has a concern or feel they have an extenuating circumstance, you know, then there's a process that they can bring that to the attention, you know, the principals, the superintendent, however we want to do it. And then see if there's some way that we can assist that family. So, I don't think it's bad to have that written in, you know, but that's an implementation thing.
Right.
I wouldn't want to put it in the policy.
Right.
Because you want the policy to be evergreen.
Yeah.
Not change over time.
So, just as a quick aside, do we, do we, um, how do we inform parents of potential kindergarten students? The, the kinds of things that we're going to either expect of the kids as they come in or, yeah, I guess that would be it, the expectations of, of, um, what will occur in kindergarten? Do we let them know? I mean, I, I would agree with you. When I look at what kindergarten kids can do, I'm totally amazed. But sometimes I think that we, we, as parents, move our kids forward and we're not really giving them a chance to be kids. And so, all of a sudden, they find themselves in a rather overwhelming kind of situation. So, I can, you know, I, I can understand that. So, if I, if I'm a parent, do I know what the expectations are of, of...
Mr. Kelly, we do a number of things to address that. We have a kindergarten parent forum in January.
Yeah.
And we advertise that and market that everywhere. We send out information and posters to all of the area preschools. So, every preschool in our, not just in our school district, but in North Allegheny and other local areas, they get all information from us about our kindergarten curriculum, kindergarten registration, inviting them to come to the kindergarten parent forum. And then we have a kindergarten readiness calendar that we give to all the parents of registration, and it, it basically is, every single month, it lists all the skills they should be working on with their child to prepare them for kindergarten.
Okay. Maybe we just need to, as part of our discussion, make sure that we're reaching out as much as we can and maybe even more so, to make sure the parents understand what it is that the kids are going to be exposed to.
Hello?
We're on policy two thirty-four.
The, uh, next item on, uh, the policy is the first reading of the anti-hazing revisions. And ask Dr. Manarino to give a thumbnail sketch of the changes.
Well, we added the word anti to the hazing policy that we have.
by this district in the form of basically athletics and activities. And that's really what the changes are. It was, it was a policy that was outdated and we brought it a little bit up to date working with PSBA policies on a similar nature. And really just talked about reckless and intentional endangers that jeopardize people and students and those types of things. So that's what this policy is about. It's about the fact that we will not support nor condone any form of hazing whatsoever. Everybody on a team, a program, or an activity are all equal. And, and that's the, the gist of the policy. And that, I'm sorry, and the, the end of this is the complaint process in the event something occurs, how you go about submitting a complaint if you feel like your child has been hazed in one of our activities or one of our programs.
And I could say with certainty that this is, we're doing this just to update the policy, but we've never had an issue.
Yeah.
From my, from my perspective, I'd heard anything that we've had problems with this. We just want to make sure our policy is up to date.
Just a footnote, clerical note, on the bottoms of pages, my iPad just shut down, but on the bottoms of pages, I think two through four, it still says hazing policy, not anti-hazing.
Okay. One more?
The fourth item for the first reading is a new policy dealing with the procurement code of conduct. This is pretty cut and dried and it just says that members of the staff and will not be accepting gifts or gratuities in the procurement process for North Hill School District.
We're going through a food service audit and this was one that the auditor felt as though we, we should have a policy of this nature in. And so that's why this is a new policy.
I just had one more comment about the first, the policy 006. Those revisions are consistent. Also, you mentioned the PSBA recommendations and those changes are consistent with what the PSBA recommends that we put in our policy with respect to safety and security.
Correct. Good. Excellent. Thank you.
I move the policy items one through four be added to the December 4th, 2018 work session legislative meeting agenda for the second reading and approval.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
I think we got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dave, did you have something you wanted to add to the 636, 626 policy?
Well, I was just going to mention that it is a requirement of the school lunch program to add this particular language, but it doesn't really change the language from our other policies, which already limits us from taking any gifts above $25 that are not, or that are not consumable in nature. So it really makes no changes. It just has the specific language that the federal auditors would be looking for.
Great. Thank you, David. Okay, Dr. Nolish, finance?
Okay, thank you. We have five items to approve. The first is the general fund bills. Second is capital project fund bills. Third is food service fund bills. Fourth is budget transfers. And five is the payroll for the month of October 2018. So we are basically, our motion is to ratify all of those. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve finance items one through five.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Those are all very straightforward. The last two items are just informational items. We have a summary statement of revenues and expenditures, the final 2018 unaudited, and the revenue summary as of October 2018 unaudited.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nolish. We can move on to support services. That would be Mrs. Spade.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, could you enlighten us on where we're at with the roof at the senior high and the entranceway to Westview, please?
The senior high roof is, is moving along quite well. As of this week, we should be done with all the roofing areas that are above student classrooms. And essentially, for the most part, all you have left is the gymnasium and the naderatorium sections of the roof. There's some, some metal edging around the roof that still needs to be installed. We should be completing it this month, depending on weather, of course. Biggest issue will be the naderatorium because it is a different construction than the rest of the building. Rest of the building has a metal roof on, on bar joists and the naderatorium is a concrete pre-stressed roof, so it has to be attached differently. But it's, it's moving along well. As far as the Westview project is concerned, we should be able to utilize that, that entrance as it was designed to be utilized next week. Obviously, there's still some small things to finish up in it, but functionally, it should be ready to go by next week.
Are the doors in?
The doors are in.
And it's only the skylight we're really waiting for?
Uh, there's a handrail, a light, some light fixtures, and the heater that are to be installed tomorrow and next week.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's great news.
Okay. Next item. That the board approve consulting service with McFadden, McFadden, Cris, Crystal, and Associates, Associates to generate three conceptual design options to renovate the high school cafeteria. Now, the intention outcome of this feasibility study is forming alternatives for the pleasing non-instructional dining atmosphere more suited for high school students. Additional outcomes are menu flexibility, increased speed of service, explaining food sections, expanding food sections, sorry, high participation rate and increased revenue. Base design options are included with the McFarland, Crislin Association proposal. The cost of this feasibility study is $2,400 and it will come out of the food service budget. Okay, get back here.
Sorry, okay, thanks. Okay.
The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve support services, item two.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just wondering if we had used McFarland, Kissler, and Associates before or if we bid out their consulting services, where they came from?
Yeah, we have used them in virtually all of our kitchen designs in the last 20 years.
Basically, what we're doing is we're going from the old school cafeteria that we redesigned in 2006 when we did the high school, more to a food court concept if we can. And that's what this idea is. So we met with the architect, they have some preliminary ideas, some are a little more invasive than others. But the basic concept is to move the high school cafeteria into more of a food court style cafeteria that we chose not to do whenever we renovated the high school in 2006.
And the funds from this, for this project will come from?
The food service fund, not the general fund.
Right. And the...
Not necessarily.
Based upon which, so if there's major construction involved, major, the, the food service fund can pay for equipment.
Food service fund can pay for equipment, design, those types of things. They cannot spend their money on facilities.
Yeah. So if we're moving walls and redesigning the space, we're going to have to discuss if we would put capital fund or general fund money into that. So that's why it says three, three conceptual designs. Because one is a little more invasive than the other two.
Okay. And the wellness committee will be involved with respect to determining what, once we've determined what we're going to go with, they're going to, we're going to work with our committee to help figure out what we're going to put in there.
I would assume.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah.
So this sounds like this is really just the first step.
Yeah.
It's, it's to see what we can do with the space. It's the feasibility of the space. Because it's, it's, it's an odd shape. It's a horseshoe.
Yeah.
It's not a rectangle, what would, which would make this much easier. It's not. And the kitchen's inside the horseshoe, so. Interesting. So good luck, right?
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see.
It'll be interesting to see what they come up with. See their ideas.
And serve them all bag lunches.
Okay. All right. Do you have a motion?
Do we need to?
We need a motion.
Yep.
You have a motion.
We have a motion. That was our discussion.
We have, any discussion?
That was our discussion.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
Okay, we can now move on to the presentation, the moment we've all been waiting for. Dr. Manarino, you are on your own.
I move to adjourn.
And a look back here.
No.
Before we move on, Mr. Hall.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wanted to email you this week and I didn't have an opportunity. I want you aware of the fact that when I went to vote the other day, the entrance into the voting polls, I went in the middle doors and that silver light, you know, on the bottom, it's all chopped up. It's like a hole there and it was difficult for me to get my wheels over it. I had to have somebody help me lift it. And that's a danger there of somebody tripping. Would you please have Mr. Swindell look into that?
Which building?
It's the middle doors going into, you know, the voting.
Middle school? Okay.
Thank you.
I'll have him look at that.
No, I, I say this, sir, we've spent a lot of time on this presentation, we really have, there's a lot of discussion.
How long is it?
I'm sorry?
How long is the presentation?
It's going to be after the kickoff, I can assure you that. But, take your time. But anyway, we do...
Just yell out score updates along the way.
You're on the clock, you got 30 seconds. Anyway, we...
We can just go right to the last slide, it says any questions. All right, all seriousness, I said three years ago, whenever we had the, the demographic study and the last time we had to redistrict, that every three to five years that we were going to have to take a look at this. And guess what? It's three years later. As I said, whenever the ma'am lady came up here and made the first public comment, this is not a knee-jerk reaction like it was the last time, that we were pinned into a corner once we got demographic data and we had to move by February of that year because the data was showing us that we were not going to be able to open our schools in August if we did nothing. We're not there right now. This is the opportunity for me to have studied these numbers for the last three years and project them up and, and then take the reality of what the community was doing and not the demographic study of what the community was doing to get us to this three-year point to say that we've got to start talking about this because in the next couple of years, we are going to be in a situation where we have elementary schools with not only zero classrooms available, because we have that now, right, Kristi? But we will have negative numbers available. And when there's negative classroom numbers available, then we have a major issue. And so that's where this is. This is the preliminary discussion. This is not, we're moving sixth grade to the middle school and we're moving them in January. No, we're not. We're going to talk about seven options that we have in front of us that could handle the spacing capacity issues that we're facing. And they're great issues because we have a number of students here and more and more and more moving in. That's a great thing to have. There's a lot of school districts around us that don't have this problem, so I'll take it. It's showing us that not only are your houses valuable, but people want our education. And that, as a superintendent, makes me very proud to stand here and say that. So I do want to talk about our capacity, how we got here, what it looks like, what the reality is about our demographic data and again, not somebody's algorithm. So with that being said, I just want to start with, here's our data from one year. From one year to the next, every number's plus and they're all green. The negatives are red, there's not one on there. Every single one of our buildings is larger this year than it was last year. I promise we will post this after if you, if you want us, so you can take pictures as much as you want, but we will post this. This is not the, the double-seeker probation file that no one's allowed to see. This is going to be out there. So if you can see, all of our numbers are going up. And when you look at High Cliff, it's plus 76. That's one school year, 76 students larger than it was the year before. So if you recall, three years ago, one of our options was to add classroom space to Ross and to McIntyre. Well, we added classroom space to McIntyre and we're filling it. So it's a really good thing that we took on that project when we did, or we would be in serious issue at McIntyre Elementary. So this is a snapshot of each building and again, just big numbers of students as it looks in that specific building. And then I wanted to throw this out there because if you remember the demographic study, the one thing Shelby Stuman said to us was that Ross and McIntyre would grow, High Cliff would slightly grow, and Westview would grow or slightly decrease. Westview has slightly decreased or flatlined with negative three in three years. But McIntyre is plus 103 in that three-year period. It's a big number. And then you have High Cliff, which was supposed to slightly grow, 52 is not slightly. And that's where we're beginning to see some of our capacity issues do exist at High Cliff. And again, we'll get to those numbers as well. But we're up 145 students in that three-year period. We were to, we were to top out at 4,500 students in 2025 on our demographic study. So one of two things is going to happen. Either they're off in the number of years that we're going to hit that peak, and we've hit that peak and we're about to go down, or we're going to keep going up until 2025 and we're going to go through the ceiling that they had once put into that demographic study. Again, I don't know, these kids aren't even on the planet yet, but it looks as though our enrollment is going to increase. And so we only have a finite number of elementary classrooms and here's where we are in the district. Again, the high school's negative 73 because if you recall back, we had at one time when we did the demographic study, a very small fifth and sixth grade. Well, that very small fifth and sixth grade is now juniors and seniors. And our 11th grade class is our smallest class, K through 12. It's like 299 students, small. When I came here in 2002, we graduated 477 students from the high school that year. And our junior class is 299. Our largest class, K-12, is kindergarten and they're 389. So you can see how those numbers end up looking like they do. It's not, what happened to the high school? Well, that small bubble that was in the elementary schools has now trickled its way up to the high school and it's on its way out. And we have large numbers of students in that K through six band right now as they're obviously growing up and moving through our system. So that's the difference from 1617, whenever we had that, we have to redistrict because they don't fit moment to where we are now. Okay? This is what this school year looks like by building. And I'm just going to focus on the elementary school at this point in that High Cliff has zero classrooms. I just want to focus on the number of classrooms available part here. When it says number of classrooms built, that's rooms for K-6 education. It doesn't count special education rooms, gifted rooms, speech therapy, math coaching, those types of rooms. It's just for me, for K-6, when I build those sections. There's zero K-6 classrooms at High Cliff right now. But we knew in April what that looked like with the projection and we had that plan that what was going to happen if we had to get to 29 and we got to 29. We had a contingency plan if we had to get to 30. And that, again, for us, comes down to what does kindergarten look like? Because we never have an idea of what kindergarten is going to look like. There's no measure out there that's going to tell us how many kindergarten students we're going to get. And that's what makes this game so difficult. And I've said so many times, whenever I know how many kids we have in kindergarten, I will tell you how long we can sustain this model. I know how many kids we have in kindergarten this year and I'm telling you we can sustain this model for next year. And that's where the slightly chance, like if there's a truckload of kids that come in here at Christmas, there's a chance that we're not going to be able to sustain it for next year. But based upon our numbers, and we have reasonable room in each one of our grade bands, at each one of our schools, that I haven't lost any sleep thinking about whether we can open next year's K-6 environment in an elementary school. We're going to be able to get there. Unless something dramatic out of the box happens to us, it's not going to happen next year. Okay? So these are our numbers. Ross is another issue with one classroom and an area that, that families move into quite frequently and an area that in the demographic study says that they are going to grow, one is, becomes a concern. Okay, this is this year. We already opened, we're full speed ahead. It's already Thanksgiving, 43 days till Christmas, so get shopping. We're good with these numbers. And so what we do is we project them up. Real simple. I take our first graders and I make them second graders. And we use our class size policy to determine the number of students we have in each of those bands and how many seats we have available. And what happens when you go from kindergarten and first grade grade band of 23 students in a classroom to 25 in second and third grade, you gain capacity with the same number of kids. And then you move that grade band again, in fourth grade to 27, you gain capacity. to twenty five in second and third grade, you gain capacity with the same number of kids. And then you move that grade band again. In fourth grade to twenty seven, you gain capacity. I took kindergarten and I took an average of the last five years, which becomes a big number for us. And so I projected a high number of kindergarten. There's even space in kindergarten to go higher than the one I projected with this. And we have two, two, two and five classrooms available to us. So you can see where High Cliff went from zero to two. As a large group leaves and as the students move up, we gain classroom capacity. And this is where I'm telling you we don't have to do this for next year. But we do have to continue to have this conversation because at some point that projected number is going to go negative if we continue to grow like we're growing. And the hardest part about this is in none of these studies does it talk about students that move into the district. And we had a hundred and twenty seven students move into the district last summer. And we're still okay for next year as long as they move into the right grades and the right buildings. But we'll have contingency plans, just like the one I mentioned with with Christie, that if we got to thirty, we have a contingency plan. It's not crisis. So that's where we are as we move up to next year. You can see, we went from a hundred, we run a hundred and fourteen elementary sections right now. And it's projected at a hundred and eleven at this point. And then kindergarten is the is the factor that adjusts that out too. Okay, in this factor, it has four kindergartens at High Cliff, which has traditionally been the number. Five kindergartens at McIntyre, five kindergartens at Ross and four kindergartens at Westview. That's a big kindergarten. Every once in a while, we throw a six in there at McIntyre. I thought this year we were going to get to seven, but we didn't. And I think we had, did we have six at Ross? I don't think we did. So so these numbers are safe in where they are. Safe not knowing what kindergarten looks like too. Okay, so we could have a small kindergarten. Did the Penguins win the Stanley Cup five years ago? I don't know. That usually determines how many kids we get in kindergarten. So what we write, what we have right now is we're approaching maximum capacity in three of our four buildings. And I think you can all see that just from the numbers I showed you. We're reaching it. We're not at it. We're not over it. But we're to the point where let's start to talk about this now so that I'm not up here in December and saying, we've got a problem and we have to make a decision by February. That was not a fun year for any of us, your kids included. So this is that explanation I just gave you went from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and eleven. There's additional rooms available for next year as we start out. And then this is what it does not predict, does not predict those students that are moving in. So I just explained this slide. Okay? So here are the seven options that have been kind of thrown out there. Whenever I talked to the enrollment planning committee, said, what do you think we should do if we're faced with this situation? So this is some of the stuff that I've heard. These are some of the things that I've talked to other people about. So we got seven ideas on the board. Redistrict elementary attendance areas. So of all of us, that's called redistricting. Okay, and I'm going to talk about how that impacts this current population with the current map that we have. One that I heard was reconfigure our elementary grades. Let's do two primary schools, K two. And let's do two upper elementary schools, three, six. So I'll explain what that looks like if we would do something like that. Again, let's put an addition at Ross Elementary School. As you recall, when we talked about this the last time, we said, let's do an addition at Ross and McIntyre because that's where our hotspots were. We did the addition at McIntyre. So left on the board is an addition at Ross and it has one classroom available. So let's explore what that would look like. How about an addition at High Cliff since they have zero classrooms available to us and is an area that is continuing to grow? So is it feasible to put an addition on at High Cliff? Reduce full day kindergarten to half day kindergarten, another thing that I've heard quite a bit about. So I'll explain what that would look like and what it would do. Elementary class size policy guidelines. Let's simply keep everything the way it is, just increase the class size. Because as you increase class size, you increase capacity in your school. It's a real simple math problem. And then redistrict grade configuration that moves grade six to the North Hills Middle School. So before we get into these, I have been against number seven since I became superintendent. And a lot of you have heard me talk about that as a parent, as a superintendent. I love our K six environment. We're running out of options here. I'm not saying this is what I think we should do. And now all of a sudden, something has changed my mind. But I did say after I said I didn't like that was if we had to do it, it would be awesome. I promise you. And if we have to do that, it's going to be awesome. I'm going to dedicate everything we have to make sure this is the best thing that we could do for our kids. If that becomes the option, I'm not saying it is. So whenever you hear out there, why did he change? He was so against it. No, he's still against it. And if we can hold on to that K six model, let's hold on to it as long as we possibly can. Can we? Well, we can for next year. I just don't know that once we get those numbers that that's going to be possible for the twenty twenty one school year. So that's where that is. Still don't like it, but it'll be great if we have to do it. The other part of that is, well, why didn't you just do this the last time? Let's not forget, we had an open campus the last time. There was a free flowing movement between this building and the high school. The entire world language department was in this piece of this building. We vacated fourteen classrooms out of this space and we closed our campus. It took us four months to make that project happen as we tried to schedule this group into the high school. The high school is scheduled so much differently because each room is scheduled in and of itself, not like in elementary school that you have one teacher in that room all day. That's it. At a high school, you have nine rooms that can have multiple teachers in it because the kids and teachers move in that environment. Much bigger building, much more space, four months to make it happen. So if you rewind it three years again, it was impossible for us to in three months, move the world language department out and sixth grade in. The space did not exist. Well, it exists now. There's nobody in the quad any longer. This building is seventh and eighth grade only. All ninth grade operations through twelve happen in that building and the campus is closed. Times changed and we had to think differently about how our students navigated this campus. And we won't talk about, you know, those types of safety and security issues, but we had to do it. And I'm glad we did. So that's the disclaimer on number seven, that it's a done deal and they're going. So how about if we just redistrict? It won't help us. Moving a few neighborhoods this time is just not going to help us. It's not going to alleviate a capacity strain that the buildings had as it did in the past. The last time we had this, we had two buildings that were being pushed to capacity and two that had anywhere between eight and ten classrooms available to us. That's why we redistricted last time. It was the solution to the problem and it had to be done in a relatively short timeframe. It's not going to help us this time. If we move a few neighborhoods, I'm going to be back up here again the next year saying that we're going to have to move a few more neighborhoods. So in my opinion, this isn't going to help us. It's going to be a lot of hassle and a lot of grief for a lot of people to get no resolution to the issue that we have. Okay, so that's option one. It's a temporary solution. It's not going to be permanent. It was a temporary solution the last time. It got us three, probably four years because, you know, we'll be into next year as well with those same district boundaries. Option two, I'd love the idea if we were building new buildings and just starting from fresh and let's just come with this idea. I think it would be great to divide them like this. What it would look like would be High Cliff and Westview would be paired together. So High Cliff would be the K two school. The bigger school has to be the school that handles the smaller grades. And High Cliff is bigger than Westview by two classrooms. So High Cliff would have to have the K two students on that side of McKnight Road. Westview would have the three, four, five, six students. McIntyre would get the K two students on that side of McKnight Road. Ross would get the three, four, five, six students on that side of McKnight Road. Okay? This will disrupt one hundred percent of the students, one hundred percent of the teachers and parents. And I've built the models and moved students forward, put reasonable kindergartens into this and we run out of capacity in three years. So this could work. And in three years, I'll be standing here telling you, it worked for three years and we're out of space. Now what? So that poses a problem for us. Okay, it's a great idea. Academically, if we could break students into those grade bands, it would be really nice for the health, safety, social, emotional, academic support that we could give students in an environment like that and still keep them in small class sizes. This would be a great model for us. It doesn't work. Ross addition. We could certainly put on a Ross addition. It makes a gigantic school. We would have to add a satellite cafeteria to this. We were fortunate that the McIntyre cafeteria was built large enough to sustain the addition that we placed there. Ross cafeteria would not be large enough to sustain any more students. It would make a very large elementary school. It would probably require an addition, additional special spaces like additional music rooms, additional art rooms. And so it becomes a major, a major expense. And it does not solve the High Cliff problem, which is the next slide, but you've got to remember, we also have a capacity issue at High Cliff. So if we chose to put an addition on at Ross, you alleviate the Ross capacity issue. You're then going to have to go back to option one and redistrict students in order to help with the High Cliff capacity. Okay, so although this will work, it doesn't solve the capacity issue that we have at High Cliff and is going to require us to redistrict if we do this. High Cliff Elementary School addition is an impossibility. High Cliff was built with a steep slope variance in order to get a larger building on that site to begin with. And it is on one hundred percent of its footprint. There is nowhere to place additional space. And I don't think we want to buy the church across the street. I'm not sure what we would do with it if we owned it. So adding classroom space to High Cliff is an impossibility. We've looked and Christie has done a nice job of taking a look at spaces that we don't normally use as academic space to see if we can turn them into academic space. There's no room. There's nothing left. So High Cliff is what it is. So an addition doesn't solve your High Cliff capacity issue and you can't, you cannot put an addition on to the existing building. Reduce full day kindergarten to half day kindergarten has a couple of issues that come to mind. The first one is it's detrimental to the academic success of our kids. It cuts the foundational years out. We just talked, had a major discussion about kindergarten is not the kindergarten that Matt Demharder went to, which is a good thing. So cutting it in half, I believe, is going to be detrimental to the foundation of our education. But it doesn't create enough space. So if you just basically take our kindergartens and cutting them half, you're going to get two classrooms. Those two classrooms are going to get filled pretty quickly in my, just from what we look at with those projections. Also with this is parents are responsible for the midday transportation. First of all, we don't have a midday contract with ABC except for A W Beatty students. But this district doesn't transport kindergarten students. Your kindergarten students get onto a bus that goes to a school that houses kindergarten, but we don't transport kindergarten students. Does that make sense? Good. So in this case, if we did that, all half day kindergarten parents would have to, if you're morning, you're picking your child up to take them home. And if you're afternoon, you're dropping them off. They could certainly ride a bus there and ride a bus home, but there's a transportation piece in the middle. So there's a lot of logistical issues and there's a major academic issue, in my opinion, that half day kindergarten poses to us. So I don't like that one. Class size policy guidelines. This would be to increase our class size. And in this specific model, I bumped them all up too. So right now you have twenty three is the cap in K one. In this model, it's twenty five, twenty seven, it's twenty five in grades two and three. It's now twenty seven. And then why do twenty nine? You might as well do thirty if you're at that point. So I moved this to thirty for grades four through six. It increases our average class size to slightly over twenty four. It has an impact on nine of one hundred and fourteen sections, which is eight percent of the academic spaces that we operate under. And those are specifically located in this grade box at the bottom. So if we did something like this, Ross kindergarten, High Cliff, Ross and Westview, grade one would be impacted. Grade two, nobody's impacted and grade three is High Cliff only. Grade four is High Cliff, grade five is High Cliff and McIntyre, grade six is Ross. So High Cliff's all over the board here. Okay, so it's, it'll give you specific numbers in specific areas, but we also have grade bands like second grade, for example. Changing that class size isn't going to help you based upon the number of students we have and the number of sections that we're running. This is a temporary solution. It can be done if we had to move to to something that we needed temporarily. But this is not a permanent fix to our problem. And particularly whenever, you can see it only impacts eight percent of the classrooms that we operate. Okay? So it sounds like seven's done, right? This is the third time that I've looked at this. And in the fact that an option of ours is to move sixth grade to the middle school, third time. So this is not new. I've wrestled with this one a number of times. And it really comes out to this. If you go with four K five elementary schools, a six, eight middle school and a nine through twelve high school. And when I say six, eight middle school, we're not going to talk about curriculum and what it would look like tonight. That's going to be for a different night if we continue with this discussion. But this is not taking them out of the elementary departmentalized environment that they're in. Okay, that's the first thing that I'm going to suggest that we don't do. Don't pull them out and then put them onto teams. And don't then put them in a middle school environment. And I'll explain what that looks like at a later date. But this is just what grades are you housing in which buildings? So that's that first part. It creates capacity that could handle those projected numbers through twenty twenty five. It is a longer term solution. And I'm going to explain how we get to that longer term solution. Right out of the gate, you get four classrooms in each one of your buildings. So if we, if, and we're not, we're not, but if you add four to the numbers from that one slide, you're now at six classrooms at High Cliff, six classrooms at Ross, six classrooms at McIntyre, nine classrooms available to you at Westview. You've created the space and the capacity to handle this bubble if it goes through twenty twenty five. So gaining four classrooms is is important to us. I just explained the closed campus idea. That's why it becomes possible is that this fourteen classroom space that was once housing world language no longer houses world language. So it is completely vacant. Sure, every once in a while, the teachers in the middle school will come down and do different activities in the classrooms and that's acceptable. It's a large building with a lot of space. And if they need to sprawl out and do things in rooms that no one's in, there's no harm in that. So if you walk through there now, you're going to see rooms that have chairs on top of desks and the door hasn't been opened since the summer. And you're going to see other spaces that they're actually using. They're doing, they've done some pretty neat things in there with the social studies department. But there's fourteen empty classrooms right here. Okay? Missing one? I must have cut the slide about capacity. All right. So here's the deal. This building has seventy four classrooms. And I was surprised to learn that I thought the high school building was much larger and it has seventy five. So these two buildings were built for a time that was housing much, 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 much larger student populations. So the rated capacity of this building based upon its classrooms is sixteen hundred students. And we're running it at six hundred and thirty a sum. This building's running at about forty percent capacity. Three of our elementary schools are running at ninety eight percent capacity. And so when you look at capacity and capacity being the issue, you have the space here now. We didn't a year ago. World Language was here. We have it now. So the next slide says, I recommend we continue looking at option seven as the option that we would go with. When we are to that point where I come to you and say, the model doesn't work for next year, we are going to have to do something. And so what I recommend that we do is our board meeting in December is a reorganization meeting. This gives me time to really polish the plans that I have been looking at for quite some time to say, okay, what do we do with it now? Twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty kids, like what are we doing if we move this? What's it look like? What's its impact? We have changed what sixth grade looks like. This year we went to departmentalization. So our students go to one particular math teacher, one particular ELA teacher. What does that look like if we move it here? Those types of things. The timeframe is different in this building. It's a half an hour longer than an elementary school. What do we do with a half hour? Those questions I'll answer on the seventeenth of January. It gives me time to really put a focus on this plan, come together with something that if we decide that this is the right model and just you were with me as we went through one through six, I don't recommend any of one through six as the solution to this problem as a permanent solution. We might have to use some of them as temporary solutions. If we choose to put an addition on at Ross, you're going to have to select a different solution there anyways. And that's a possibility. The board ultimately gets to make that decision. But as the instructional leader of the district, I recommend we continue to take a look at this. As I said before, as a parent, I don't like it. I really like the K six environment that we provide for our kids here. It makes us unique. It gives our students an opportunity to really grow as children, to come to a middle school in seventh and eighth grade as they truly transition to the high school in that small two year window. And I think our successes in each of our buildings are attributed to that K six elementary model. This is not, I told you, he wanted to abandon it because he doesn't. But I've been asking, does anybody have an idea that we haven't talked about? Because I will explore it. And if it's better, let's do it. Because I really like the K six environment that we have. And I know a lot of our parents do as well. As a parent, I'd prefer my kid to have been in a K six elementary school, but didn't have that luxury in my school district. Sometimes we make them grow up a little too fast. And I don't like it. There's things that happen in sixth grade, like sports and activities that they're not eligible for because athletics begin in seventh grade by defined by the P I double A. I don't like that. So you're telling me I go to this school, but there's activities I'm not able to participate in. So that's on us to make sure that this experience is great for these kids. And that's why I said, if we have to do this, I'll make it awesome for them. But I didn't change my mind. I didn't sit and, oh, we'll just wait till I'll put this plan out later. I don't like it. But it'll be awesome if we have to do it. It solves our capacity issue. Hopefully I can retire in what, ten, twelve years? And we never have to talk about this again. Because twice in three years is enough. But it's awesome because people want to come here and they want to buy our houses. They want to send their kids to this district because day in, day out, we do great things. And that's who we are. So I'm losing my voice here and there's no water up here. So if we do this, we've got to really take a look at what is our spacing capacity, the real look at spacing capacity? How'd we get here? What happened? What happened to the district that used to graduate eight hundred kids and fit them in their thirteen elementary schools? We've got four. Okay, so what's our spacing capacity? What would the curriculum look like if we did this? What would the scheduling look like if we did this? What would staffing look like if we did this? Time and transportation is really important. Budget and finance, I'll tell you right now, it's not free. Because there's a lot of supports that have to stay in the elementary school that our sixth graders need at the middle school, that's not necessarily enough support here to help them. So, it's not free. I'm sorry, I'll tell you that right now. And then, how about a timeline of implementation and what our options could be to implement this if we had to do this? So, if we had to do this next year, we're way too late. Because the end of elementary school is an important milestone for kids. We do a lot of really awesome things for our sixth-grade kids as they transition to this building. We've got to include the group of fifth graders, the year that that is their end of elementary school, whatever year that may be. They've got to have those same opportunities to be leaders and to, you know, participate in the track and field event, which is an awesome day for our kids, to go on those field trips. That is important to me as an instructional leader and as a parent. We've got to do those things for those fifth-grade kids. So, it's not just, "Sixth graders, you get all this." Sorry, fifth graders, you're going with them. We're not doing that. We're going to make sure they get all the opportunities, that their end of elementary school year is really important to them too, because it's important to us. And then, what's the impact on all the operations of this if we did something like this? There's a lot of work that's involved in that last slide. And I threw a ton of stuff at you. But the most important thing is, it's not knee-jerk, don't panic. Your fifth graders are going to be in their elementary school next year. That's the most important part. And if it happens to be something that we have to do for 2021, or we choose to say, "All right, we're going to just, we're going to do it in 2021," then we really got to talk about what life looks like for the fifth graders in the year 2019, 20, because that's important to them. Okay? So, threw a ton at you. There's a lot of stuff here. Hopefully, I answered your questions, but the next slide is, anybody have any questions? It's important to Chris and the production that we put out on TV, that you come to the microphone to ask the question, or else it doesn't get recorded. So, I'm going to go sit down, and I'll answer your questions from there. So, if you have a question, feel free to come on up here and ask.
I have a question. I just want to make sure that the, or ask if the current sixth-grade teachers and middle school administration are going to be consulted at all on the possibility of moving sixth grade to the middle school on their opinions about this?
Mr. Lieberman and I have already spent a lot of conversations on it as our middle school principal, and I've spent a lot of time with our elementary principals discussing what all of this stuff would look like. I spent about two hours with Matt Demharder, who's the NHGA president, and a couple of his leadership team, and we just talked about it. What it looks like, what the impact is, those types of things. So, yes, they absolutely will be, and already have been, involved in conversations about it. But yeah, we're not going to do it without their input, particularly when it gets to the curriculum and scheduling part.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I had a little bit of a question. The, some of the things we didn't talk about that I think were mentioned at the enrollment committee are, you know, there's a number of parochial schools in our district that are not at capacity anymore, and did we consider the possibility of, you know, using those schools? And also, I just kind of wanted to touch briefly on the financial impact of just building a whole new school, which is not something that we talked about at all. And, you know, I know there'd be a large financial impact, obviously, and we'd need to buy land and whatnot, but I just thought it might be...
If we build a whole new school?
Just build a whole new school.
There's a lot of factors there. The first one is, other than the baseball field in Reese Run, we don't own a large piece of land that would be able to accommodate a building. And it would be significantly high, but that all depends on what that would look like, how large.
Right. And I mean, I don't...
What would it house, how many grades? Like, all of those things would factor into that, that number.
And we don't have, I mean, our population's increasing, but it's not increasing enough to justify an entire new building, I would think, right?
Not unless we're going to close others.
Right. Yeah. And that would, I mean, just the financial impact of all that would just be fairly astronomical.
The first question, which was the parochial schools, I have not approached any of them, but I know none of them are large enough for us to do anything with, with larger groups. Like, if we wanted to move kindergarten and make a kindergarten center, none of them are large enough to hold our kindergarten. And that becomes a problem. And they're all aging buildings to begin with, and so, we would have a maintenance cost that's going to go on top of that. And we don't transport kindergarten students. So, the transportation part of that becomes an issue. So, I'd really have to think long and hard about, if we, if we did purchase one of their buildings, what would we do with it? Who would go to it?
So, they're just not really feasible options. I just wanted to mention that as, you know, because I know people have mentioned that in the past. I think, right?
Hi, it's me again, Colleen Roth. I'm sorry. So, I just have one quick question. I know you said in January, you'll be addressing the specifics of curriculum and all of those specific details, but I was just hoping maybe perhaps you could touch for a minute. When you talk about moving the sixth graders up here to the middle school, you were saying that that would vacate four classrooms per elementary, which for elementaries, that'd be 16. So, I'm assuming you're bringing 16 classrooms here, plus possibly adding specials for the sixth graders. You're saying there are currently 14 empty rooms here. I know you said there's over a thousand-seat capacity. I'm just curious if you could just address, are you going to rejigger some of the middle school classes?
Yes, that's exactly what we would do. So, the, again, it's a big building, 74 classrooms. The special spaces already exist here. There's multiple music rooms, multiple art rooms, tech ed rooms, multiple computer labs, where those are usually in numbers of one at an elementary school. So, there's multiples already here in this building. We have 16 sixth grades now. The model that Mr. Lieberman and I started looking at to really wrestle with is 16 here. So, it's a matter of, there are vacant rooms now beyond the 14 that just exist in this little quad of the building. There's vacant rooms on the second floor and down the hallway as well. There's also rooms that are designed for 7, 8 education here that are being used for other things that we would then take over and move those other things to smaller group rooms. So, the idea is, if we went with 14, you're going to make the class size too big. We departmentalize, which means that two teachers share two sets of students, and I teach all the math, Ed teaches all the English for our two classrooms. It has to be an even number. So, 15's not a possibility. So, when we get to scheduling and all that stuff next time, it's really looking like, as we continue the conversation here, we're going to run 16 and drop the class size for those students, have smaller numbers for the sixth grade if it works out here, but we have, we have rooms available for them. It's just that there are 14 that I can tell you right now are empty. They're right there. There's more empty classrooms as you continue through the building, or more rooms that we could use for those students that are not being used for 7, 8 students now. So, that's how that ideal, does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment to make. I have to apologize, I did not realize that we were doing this tonight at the end of a school board meeting. I thought we were having a special meeting strictly for this, because it gets rather late in the evening. You're all young, but I'm getting a little bit old and it gets a little bit too confusing here. What I would like to see, to avoid confusion like we had the last time we had a redistrict, is that come January, instead of doing a lot of discussion on what we can do, I think we ought to look at what we can take away, what we will not do, to start eliminating some of it, than to keep adding to it. Such as, if you look at that first list, I'm sure you believe in here, there's one of those options that we would never, we wouldn't want, we couldn't consider. So, just take it away. You might be able to take that 10 down to eight. Who knows? But I don't like to meet every month or every other month and keep adding and saying, "We could, we could." I would like to say I start eliminating and get to what would be the best for us.
That's a good point. Also, just as a matter of, we obviously do want to hear from you. So, if you have questions, you can easily email Lori and all of those, all of the, and your email address is on the web, right? On the school district site. So, I'm just saying, if you have questions, please submit them to Lori. We want to answer those, and we will answer those, either via Amanda?
I also just want to add on to that, some of the, we're taking pictures at the beginning. There will be a special website with all of this information, all of the videos. Tell all your friends, they can post it all over social media. That we will have all of this ready for everybody to put up hopefully tomorrow. Depends how long, we have to do some compliance things with our videos before we post them. But for those of you who couldn't be here tonight, and it did go a little late in the evening, we will have everything that Dr. Manarino went over, contact information, the presentations, all available to the public.
So, we do want to hear from you. We'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. We won't, we won't list your name and your email address, but we'll have the question and with an answer if that, if that makes sense to you all. But just want to let you know that we're going to have, obviously, continued ongoing discussion with, with the board and the committees, those that will be affected by it. And hopefully, we, as I said, we will keep this as transparent as possible. There's nothing that we will be deciding outside of a public meeting. So, just to give you all an idea of where we're going from here. So, we will, we will keep you all informed. And please feel free to come to the following meetings as we, as we continue to discuss this and be, we'll be glad to take your input on anything you might have. Okay, that being said, is there anybody who would like to address the board on, make a comment on non-agenda items before we adjourn? Okay, that being said, I will motion to adjourn. Thank you. You can adjourn. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.